Mr. Mayor, I am going to be accepting consent for the other today. Okay? When I put it right, it will be a document. Okay. I'll second.
Oh, favor.
Aye.
Now, we can consent agenda. Do you have your motion on consent agenda?
I would, uh, sure of the consent agenda after that.
And the second?
Second.
Motion's made in second of the favor.
Aye.
Now, we move on to Speaker's Communication Informational Items. Uh, we have a thank you card from the Lake County Fairgrounds.
That's nice.
Our support towards the July 4th fireworks. It was a great show. They had a large crowd.
Yeah, nice, nice to hear. Thank you.
Yeah. Next, we'll move over to Lake County Movement Health Improvement Partnership. We have minutes from their meeting.
I read an article on the lunches that they're still doing at parks and how their numbers are up. And I feel like they've really increased the number of people who have used their services and that they consider very successful.
I actually helped down there last Thursday, um, helping, you know, serve the ones. Not really because they did need too much though, but there was sixty, sixty, um, you. And that's about their average.
Uh, next, we'll go on down to here, Quality PowerPoint. Which was, uh, we didn't want to do in the last two years. A great presentation by, yes, Peter Brewer and Rachel. We'll move on down to planning agenda. There were two items there. One was for an application to the, had an addition on to their job. And the other one was to applications by U.S. cellular operating company of Medford, construct a facility down there on South Ninth and F, next to B and B. And next, we'll move on down to West County Crisis Center. I think that's a training session yesterday. Uh, for strangleions, assessments.
Apparently, there was about twenty-six people that attended that. Some were military staff, officers, ambulance. I heard it was excellent, very, very.
Hello. Oh, so that was a strangulation workshop? Oh, okay.
Yes, so that they could identify.
You said in base?
Not how.
Not a how to, but, yeah, there's, there's a lot of, of times in domestic violence when that happens and how you treat the right after and how you take care that there's not something broken and you won't damage it worse. So there were some, some things you need to do afterwards that helps the health of that child or that person.
And sometimes there's not visible marks even though they have been strangled. So it's how the EMT or the officer or nurse can identify it. So I guess it was excellent. I would frankly, I could have attended.
Okay, we'll move on down to public comment period. Um, you have your comments to three minutes and state your name for the reporter. Who wants to go first?
Okay. Can I say something first, Greg? Yes. Some of you might have been here at the water meeting that kind of went south. So I would appreciate it. The more reasons I'm here is make sure, don't talk over anybody and let everybody get the chance to, to speak their opinion. And that way, I mean, if it gets unruly, I'm gonna have to, have to ask people to leave. And I really don't want to do that. So if we just keep it, keep it civil and, and let everybody have their chance to talk, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, good. Mike? I know all of you got a list of questions and stuff, so.
Okay. My name is Mike Winters. I have no relation to any other winters in town except my two sons. Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, town manager, I would like to address you today concerning the employment of Mr. Loner as Chief of Police. I don't know Mr. Loner from Adams off Ox, but what I've found out about him fills me with grave concern for our community. The community is becoming increasingly concerned about his hire in light of new information concerning his alleged harassment of a reporter for nearly ten years because of an article the reporter wrote in two thousand eight. A lawsuit's been filed, but that's at the Ninth, uh, Circuit Court of Appeals right now. It's been alleged that there is compelling evidence that Chief Loner used his position as a police officer, as Chief of Police, and his department to conduct a campaign of aggressive harassment that caused the reporter's dismissal from more than one job, supplying, going so far as to supply a fake dossier to an employer that was filled with false information that made the reporter appear as a dangerous criminal. Chief Loner flagged the reporter's name with his department's dispatch service, an action that's normally reserved for dangerous criminals. In light of this information, could you answer a few, just a couple of questions? Number one, does anyone in this room know Mr. Loner before his hire?
Met him here when he came with, uh, Chief Rue from Minnesota.
Okay.
I met him last year. I think last year, a year ago.
Okay. How did Mr. Lerner, Loner, excuse me, learn of the vacancy since it was only on the town website as far as I know?
It wasn't on the town website.
Pardon?
It was not on the town.
Okay, where was it? Where was it advertised?
On LEDs and the LOC bulletin.
Okay. People would like to know why you hired him and in light of this disturbing new information, will you rescind your offer of employment? And if not, please explain to the community why. And were any of you aware of these allegations prior to his hire?
Well, I was not aware of them for one until I read stuff on Facebook. And there's always two sides to a story.
Aye.
Okay? And I'm gonna look into it, but, um, I, I feel that when the city put the police job out before, they only did it in-house. They didn't put it out like it should have been. And so this time, we put it out. That's why our last chief got a hold of it.
Okay, were there other applicants besides him?
No.
There were no other applicants?
Not at this time. The one we had before, Chief, or, uh, Yeats was offered the job.
Yeats didn't know that. He refused it, so.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's, that's all well and good. Well, my concern is this gentleman. I mean, if he did this kind of stuff in Baker City, what's to keep him from doing it here? What's to keep him from coming after me because I'm speaking publicly? If he does, if, if the police start knocking on my door, I'm gonna be camped on your guys' doorstep.
I have a doubt, yeah.
I'm really concerned.
Well, you did make a point when you started out with your speech, alleged.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. And until proven guilty, there's always two sides. And until proven guilty, there, I mean, there is no, he hasn't been charged with anything.
I understand.
It's no alleged crime. And it's not, I mean, we do background checks when we look at applications.
If it turns out to be true, then we will probably look elsewhere.
Dave, I'm, I have to sit down. I'm really sorry. Okay, I'm not trying to be disrespectful.
But it's alleged.
I understand alleged. I was in law enforcement for fifteen years, but alleged, I mean, if a police officer, if this was alleged against a police officer that is working, he would not be on the street.
He'd be on administrative leave.
He would be on administrative leave. And he definitely would not be, be being hired as a Chief of Police for another city. So, okay, who's next?
I'll move next.
Okay.
Lawrence Leclerc. I'm Corrections Officer out at the prison. And I've lived here for about thirteen, fourteen years. Uh, my family goes way back in this town. Matter of fact, the man who's pictures on the front of the hall there is, is my great uncle. And I say that great in more than one, one facet of it. My wife got this, she working, so she couldn't make it four o'clock. I didn't, I, I heard about these things and it just didn't make sense. So I agree, find out, do the due diligence, make sure everything works out right before you continue to hire him. Or if we have a question, are we having some sort of a trial service for the Chief of Police?
We always have a probationary.
That's exactly, and, and, and that's the other part. Regardless of him, or, I mean, what I got out of the articles I read is that he aspires loyalty amongst his men.
Yes.
Because they will do what he says. But also where I work, uh, out there at the prison and stuff, we sign a code of ethics every year, as do the officers, correct?
Absolutely.
We all sign a code of ethics. And there was one part, one little part in there that even if we took everything at face value and alleged, that they asked him what, the reason why he contacted personally, outside of his normal job duties, but, and why he contacted personally, the employers of each of the, each of the employers that he was under, that the writer was under. And he said, well, he thought he was a violent person and wanted that person to know. With, considering the type of violent people that come out of Baker City that we have to watch, I don't think this, the information based on his character would, uh, rise to the level of, let me warn you guys, this is a violent guy. I don't personally like the, the, the way he interpreted the Fourth Amendment. I, I have no problem walking a drug dog around the street all the time. I have no problem with that. People went through scanners. It wouldn't bother me Fourth Amendment wise. So understand it's not, I did not agree with the writer. But if he's, if he's being harassed by the police based on the fact that his chief is putting out the word, pull this guy over, just let him know we're here and he's not a good citizen here and he's not welcome here anymore. And that's what that little part says is, it's irrefutable if that's what he said. If he said that, then that's an ethics violation. Because you don't contact somebody, has he contacted every employer, every violent, actual proven convicted violent offender? Has he personally gone out and noticed, notified them? You cannot do that. I get emails and I listen to phone calls and I read all these things that the inmates say to their people and literally, it makes my stomach turn because they're creating victims on the outside, having to bring money in. But it's my job as a public servant to uphold exactly to the letter of the rule and policy. That's my job. And I won't go and tell that guy's girlfriend that his wife is upset or that, I won't tell his boyfriend that his wife is upset. Okay? Or they're both sending him money. That's not my job because that's, that's his freedom to say that and do that. So I don't have to agree with him. However, if this is what he said, even on this one instance, that is a code of ethics violation. And I don't, the rest, alleged lawsuits and all that other stuff. And before I run out of time, I do want to say this. If we hired him and we don't let him go immediately instead, and we let, and we bring him on, if he passes this probationary period, which so far has been over ten years before we've gotten to this point according to the papers, then we're gonna put him on administrative leave. We really want to pay an administrative leave pay to a chief that we're not gonna use. And that if this works out wrong, we're not gonna be able to keep him. If he doesn't get along, I also read that he doesn't get along with the sheriffs and the state thing, and that's from his own word, not from the others. But if you don't get along with sheriff and state police, who's got your back? All right? I'm concerned that this Chief of Police, I have very, more than reservations. If any one of those things that he said or did is even possibly close, you're gonna have DPSST revoking him. You're gonna, but before all that happens, and it takes months and months and months for them to revoke his license, he's getting paid by us, the city, the city of Lakeview, as well as, you know, being around here and creating more of this.
Okay.
Who needs this?
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Uh, so I'm Mike McGowan. Um, I live at four, three, five Mountain View. So, uh, I also just heard about this this morning. I, I look to see whether I could read, um, any official, uh, reports. And there are two documents available online if you, if you look, and I have copies that I can share if, if anybody can't find them. One is the, the, the order for the First Court to hear this matter. And the other one is the, um, is one of the submissions to the Appeal Court. Because the way that this process happened, and it's a good point that this all happened in two thousand eight, so it's been ten years.
Right.
But the, the way that this happened was the reporter has filed a complaint. It's not, you're, Robert is right, there's no, there's no charges, there's no criminal behavior. What the reporter is saying is to the court, and it's a federal court, is my, my constitutional rights, a freedom of speech and the ability to operate as a newspaper reporter have been compromised because of the actions of this, uh, Chief of Police who has taken a retribution against me and then outlines the facts. In the first case, the first, um, court hearing, the judge found not a hundred percent, but mostly in favor of the reporter. And I think it's important that everybody in the front of this room has read that opinion by that judge. Because it goes through, it's fifty pages long, but it's double spaced, it's pretty quick reading. It goes through the facts and it talks about what the reporter did, what the Chief of Police did, and what the judge finds the law to be. And because the judge found, you know, some of the points in favor of the reporter, some of them not in favor, the, the city of, of Baker City and the police chief have appealed to the Ninth Circuit U.S. Court of Appeals. And that's a pending appeal now, so it hasn't been decided. But I think what's important for us here is that we're at least familiar with the facts as recited by the judge. Because the judge is, is the independent guy. And I, and I agree with this gentleman, and some of those facts concern me. Because, uh, one of the facts that the court found was that the Chief of Police stepped outside his role as a, as a, a, a law enforcement officer and, and made personal representations to be, to several employers of this, uh, reporter. And, you know, the consequence of that was the reporter was fired twice. And, uh, some of the things, and the judge found that some of the things that the chief, um, said were not true, were not complete. And because they were not complete, you know, not, uh, correct. So, you know, that should always, that concerns me too. It's a, it's a great concern. I mean, you can have different views about what public safety means and what role the law enforcement officers play in accomplishing public safety. It's subjective. Somebody wants more safety, somebody wants more personal freedoms. But when you read the, the opinion of the court, the First Court, it, it raises a significant concern. I just, my comment is I hope that everybody in front of this room will please do that. And, and then I just have one question, and that is, um, has, an offer of employment has been made by the, the town of Lakeview to this gentleman? And is there an employment contract that this gentleman would sign?
There will be.
There will, there will be, right. And so a normal employment contract will have contract clauses in there that, you know, requires a full disclosure of all pertinent facts relating and, and, you know, states the, the nature of the licenses, permits and so on. And so that would be something, I think in this case, even if the town decides to, to go with this gentleman, um, you know, you want to make sure that your contract is very clear on those points. And then the last question is, um, if this gentleman is hired and, um, and shows up for work, this is a lawsuit, there, there are several, I guess, lawsuits that are gonna be coming out of this. The town of Baker City was employing him when these actions occurred, and I guess they will have an obligation to pay for his defense. But even if they cover a hundred percent of the cost, and that's something to be checked because we don't want to pay costs for employees' behavior before he came to Lakeview. Even if they pay a hundred percent of the cost, there will be, um, you know, participations in trial proceedings and depositions. And time that, that this individual will need to spend that has nothing at all to do with Lakeview. And I just want to be sure that the town has considered that we may, until this is all resolved, and these cases can take some time, we may not have a, a full-time police officer. And there might need to be, I mean, I would guess, some kind of an accommodation, you know, does, is he allowed to go up to Baker City or to Portland or wherever the hearings are at Lakeview expense in order to deal with a problem that shouldn't have anything to do with us?
And that would have to be at his expense.
Well, you would think, but he would also be taking time with the department, you know, you would need to have.
You would have to deal with that in the contract.
Correct. That's right. That's my point.
Let's move on.
Thank you.
Yeah?
I have a question because I thought he was already hired and starting in September. So has all of this been done? Is this in the contract?
The job has been offered.
It's been offered, okay, because I.
And he was supposed to start no later than October first.
Okay. So he hasn't been given the job, he's been offered the job.
Okay, anybody else? Yes?
One question, has he accepted the offer?
I have no idea.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, let's move on. Department report, Scott Allen, nine-one-one.
Any questions? You can see that are, that there were over two thousand nine-one-one calls.
Yeah.
On a, on a circuit, which, we're replacing our, our recording machine that does all of our recording, wall wire lines and emergency lines. The machine is, runs on a Windows ninety-five platform. It's, it was bought in two thousand four. And we, we aren't grading now, but what it's doing is it's picking up static. And so, really should only be about three hundred calls on that circuit. Because we have three circuits, and you will see each circuit has like two hundred and ninety, another one has three hundred, the other has two thousand. And I would say probably fifteen hundred of them are just picking up static. Somehow it's triggering it and recording. So, um, September seventeenth, we'll have our new system in place. Move forward.
September seventeenth.
But we are recording. It's just a nightmare trying to find this recording.
Uh, Dennis is not here for fire. I do want to make a comment that I, uh, really, uh, proud of the way the guys handled that fire last night. Jumped right in there, got right on top of it and got her out. All agencies, there was our department, Thomas Pick Westside, uh, Oregon Department of Forestry was there, there was a private contractor, uh, Fish and Wildlife and BLM.
High Creek.
And High Creek was there.
Two Warner Creek work crews. Fire teams now.
Two fire crews.
And three crews from the prison did hand line, and I went by there today. And, yeah, they're still out there working on it.
They were doing a mock.
Yeah, and the fire marshal's out there.
That was pretty impressive. That's the second small fire that has been contained very quickly in less than four hours.
That was the one.
It was pretty impressive.
Was there any damage to public private property or public utilities?
Just sagebrush and grass. Okay, um, we go to public works, Jeff.
You guys probably saw I didn't put a report in this month, but, uh, I had a couple sick days last week and been trying to catch up ever since. You can see my contractors are pretty much all over the place and they're, you know, they're really going after it. Looks like the work they're doing is, is top quality. I wish they would stay more contained in one area and not be spread all over, but that's not really my call. But it's, it's going ahead quite well. Our, our water usage for last month was fifty-two million gallons over the month, and that's just about exactly what we're able to produce right now. So we've, we've got every well that's functional running right now, and we're gaining about three inches a day on filling the tanks up. So we, we used about six feet of water out of the tanks last month when we flushed, and we've been gaining that back at three inches a day. So, uh, we, it's very important that we get this well nine that we're working on up and running as soon as possible. We've got parts ordered for a, a sand filter to get the sand out of it so we can start using that water. So as soon as we get that in our hands, we'll, we'll get it hooked up and have that at our, at our disposal so we get the tanks, you know, topped off and not be quite so on the edge. We have scheduled, uh, a contractor to come down a week from today to fix our problem we're having with the Berry re-injection well. The perforations on the re-injection well became corroded and plugged off, so it hasn't been functioning up to par. So we have a guy coming down, he's gonna put a camera in it, and then he's gonna pop a small amount of explosives in there to bust the scale out of the pipe, and then he'll go back into the camera, make sure we got it all cleaned out, and then we should be fully functional for the winter. Playing with the idea of while he's in town, having him take a look at the, the other re-injection well for the DOC. I mean, we'd have to have them shut down for a day, but it might be well worth it to stick a camera in there and see if, you know, we don't want to have issues over the winter. So, uh, see what his schedule allows. We, we have to do the, the Berry one, we'll get it done a week from today, and we'll talk with him at that point about that one either at a later date or, or while he's here the next week if possible. So, uh, very close on our water production.
Are you contemplating doing any things like water on the even side of the street one day?
No, at this point.
We've never really had that, but.
We never have. I really don't want to start. And I, I think, you know, these last two months has, has been our highest use of the year. When people start seeing those higher bills, they kind of naturally cut back on the watering.
Watering the water.
So, uh, you know, we, we're okay at this point. And we, we have, you know, we can use that well nine if we absolutely had to. I choose not to at this point because we are ahead of the game, but it would be really nice to have that other well at our disposal.
How close are we?
Well, we haven't received our parts yet. They're, they're gonna get back to me soon, so we could have parts for that in our hands next week. And we're gonna, could have put in.
That's the sand filtering system.
Sand filtering, yeah.
Are water projects coming right along?
It is, yeah. They're, they're moving, moving forward. I don't know if anybody was able to see what they did going up the hill. They did a nice road up there and it happened very quickly. So I was really concerned about that part of it, but it's, it wasn't gonna be an issue and it seems like they're right.
The only issue that I've heard, Jeff, is that, uh, some people had no idea that they were gonna have, wake up the next morning to their streets torn up and piled, you know, and so are we working on letting people know when they're gonna be in their area? to their streets torn up and, and piled with mud. And so are we working on letting people know when they're going to be in their area?
Yeah, it's pretty obvious when they're coming, but we have knocked on door to door.
No, but it's obvious after they've already started operations, so letting people know.
They've done overpasses to keep people able to get in and out of their homes, but, you know, it's a, it's a big project, it's a, an excavation.
But I think just knocking on doors and saying, we're going to be doing this tomorrow, or starting two days from now. Uh, somebody said that they had parked in their normal spot and couldn't get out of it because it opened up a big hole on the side or something like that. So, I'm, we don't want people trapped.
Yeah, absolutely not.
I just think notification might not be a bad idea.
You can tell me to stop talking if this isn't allowed, but I know a lot of people are concerned about their water currently, and I would assume it's related to the project. Could you address what, what people could be expecting due to this large project going on? And does it affect their water right now?
Um, well, the, the point they're at right now shouldn't be having any effect on their water, because basically they're just digging next to the line that, that exists. Two weeks from now, when they start hooking the lines up to that, then it's going to be open and closing valves, and we always notify everybody, and that always stirs things up, you know, you have water flow stopping and then restarting, and then flushing the hydrants, uh, for the tests and stuff, so it, it's going to be an inconvenience for certain. But we, we do notify everybody, you know, within a couple block radius, what's going on.
So what's caused, I, I can't say personally I'm dealing with any of this, but I noticed people posting on Facebook, what's causing the water, because I thought we're done flushing, and there's some pretty bad water right now.
There is some pretty bad water right now. We, we're using every well that we have, and we have a couple that, you know, have even more iron and manganese than we normally use. Like well two that's down by the baseball field, we're running it twenty-four hours a day. And, you know, in the past, we've used it only in emergencies, and so it's just what we have available. The, the well that we're getting ready to turn in when we, we get the sand filter on it, is one of the lowest in iron and manganese that we have. So, that's going to help.
It's just going to take a little time.
It is, absolutely. And, and even when the water project is done, you know, it's, it's not going to be a huge noticeable difference. That, that water project's main objective is to stop the leaks. You know, that sixteen inch line was leaked, it leaked about twenty-four times last summer. And so the, the patches, the narrow patches we put on it are like four hundred and forty dollars, and then a two-foot long patch is over a thousand dollars. So, you know, it's the manpower and the time, and it is an iron steel line, so it tends to hold more scale and more iron and manganese than the plastic well, so, but, yeah, it's a process.
Okay. Um, we're going to, I'm going to back up, sorry Dave, I asked you, do you have anything you want to add? Nope. Okay. Daryl, come on here, Roberto, do you have anything to add? Okay.
So no master water plans still?
Pardon me?
No master water plans still?
No, he was supposed to have it this week, but it should be on the twenty-eighth, but he'll bring it to us, that's in two weeks on Tuesday.
Okay, so move on to real business. Uh, resolution nine three nine, a matter of closing funds seventy-two and transferring those funds to Lake District Hospital. Do I hear a motion on that?
I have a quick question, what is, what is our fund seventy-two?
The flag fund.
A what?
Flag fund.
Oh, flag fund, mhm.
Oh, no, sorry, the bike fund.
Bike.
Bicycle. I'm sorry.
Okay, but is it now?
Years ago, they, they started to.
A bicycle fund?
Bike fund. It's for bike helmets.
Oh, bicycle helmet fund.
And so we're donating the money we had left in our account to who's doing it now to give out the helmets.
Oh, okay, so you transfer those funds from the city over to the hospital?
Right, right, for helmets. Just for bike helmets, that's what the money will be used for.
This is, uh, this is all done in memory of Christopher Hayes. He was killed by a vehicle while he was on his bicycle.
Okay. I, I wasn't here at that time.
No. Anyway, do I hear a motion on closing this fund?
Do you want to report a resolution nine three nine?
Second. Motion made second in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have the logging, transit logging test report in here.
It's behind, I put my own stuff, so I apologize. No, behind all your budgets. So I apologize.
Um, is this last year? Is this year?
Yeah, we can start left in the, in the mailbag.
Oh, wow.
Well, I did one quarter so far.
Yeah, so that's not too bad.
No, it's excellent.
Yeah.
That's at the start of the heat season, so.
Yeah, I like that.
I'm sure they'll like it too.
It'll be high now, but it'll go down.
Right.
As we get closer to, you know, winter, that kind of, but, um, we already had the spike over Labor Day.
Okay.
Does Michael see that?
Well, that looks, appears to be right on budget, the budget at a hundred thousand, so at twenty-five and change, I mean, that's right, the budget.
Okay. Um, I have nothing to report, uh, council? Anybody? Anything to add?
I do not. I'm just working with the ch- uh, chamber, uh, getting ready for, uh, Labor Day and the parade and, whatever other things that our director appears.
Good for that, too. Okay, nothing else?
So, real quick, I'm, I'm at this last meeting, and I apologize, I'm almost, um, at scout camp with two more boys, you know, about June seventy-nine. And, um, so, and I apologize for being late on, you know, start for cultural communication for next week, but, um, I appreciate the public coming out tonight. Um, I don't mean to get on a soapbox, but I would like to see if, if we could get, you know, just a further report with legal counsel possibly about some of the issues that were raised tonight, um, especially with potential litigation that, that could be done. And so just if we could kind of consensus agreeing to have that meeting as soon as possible, we'd be great to see. Um, and it, and it just needs to be that, just kind of an information sharing on potential liability that we might have in the future, so, which is obviously a reason for an executive session. That's just the comments I have.
I agree. I think that's not a bad plan. If, if in the meantime we do argue diligence and, and reading these reports that we manage and try to check it out, I, um, I like it when I can find a report that is from the Baker paper or something like that. I don't like necessarily reading people's take on it on Facebook, because there's always somebody who's skewing that to the.
There's three articles from different papers.
That was quick, I didn't even have to turn my computer on.
All you have to do is just Google his name and set up.
It'll all come up.
And I, I wrote a little post, um, I didn't mean to cut you off, but.
That's okay.
With, with the budget stuff that came out, um, just the year ending stuff, um, I don't know if we want to kind of go over some of that. It looked like some of the numbers were a little off from what we projected the end of year dates would be. So, just raised some concern, and I can talk to you about that afterwards, but I'd encourage people to look at. I know it was part of the consent agenda, and we adopted it before I got here, but, um, just take a peek at those. I don't know if I'm just going to watch and see people, a little less relevant, expect it, take it easy.
Are you talking about the budget we passed or something that?
This is very.
Just the, the stuff that was in your pack is that you're in, just, hopefully everybody took a peek at those, but maybe you guys brought up that you were a little concerned too, yeah. I felt a bit concerned.
Just, if you don't mind, I won't say it to tell them, just understand that even if he's found innocent of all those charges, he will still go under ethics review for his actions that are deemed not, uh, high enough to be, you know, threatening in a, in a, in a certain way. But what his actions are as far as code of ethics goes, you could, you could have a guy who gets cleared of it and everything, and then he loses his, his, his certification because he violated code of ethics, code of conduct.
Okay?
Okay.
Nothing else? And we will adjourn the meeting at, uh, four forty-two.